We got these three. I can... We can stick with last night's order.
That's what Jesse said yesterday, sir. He said, uh... He told us music, we have saxophone. Saxophone.
Okay, we're coming up on seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and get our seats here. Where've we got... Where are you? Sorry if I missed that. Sorry.
Okay, it is seven o'clock and I want to be prompt here. First of all, my name's Kirby Hosman and I want to thank each and every one of you for coming and showing an interest in this town hall style meeting. Our goal is to educate you and give you an opportunity to ask every question you could possibly imagine. We really do want this to be an open and transparent process and, you know, we're excited actually and the last two meetings have been really, really good. This is a part of civil discourse and we want to keep it informational, educational, and civil. What's going to happen tonight is we're going to have several folks that represent organizations from all over the county and kind of make the case. We're going to talk about constitutional, we're going to talk about finances, we're going to talk about the jail itself, and we're going to sort of make the case for why we believe this is a necessity and why we should do this. But it's really important that at the end of that, and it's going to take about 45 minutes, 50 minutes to get through the presentation, and then we want to give you the floor. We're going to give you the opportunity to ask any question you want and we really do want to hear from you. We want to thank WTNS for streaming this live and we will, if we get questions from online, we'll field those questions as well because again, we want you to leave here hopefully excited but at least informed. So once again, thank you for being here. We're going to start. I'm going to turn it over to the Honorable Judge Bachelor.
Thank you, Kirby, and thank you everyone for being here tonight. Town hall meetings are unique to American democracy and your presence here tonight and the questions that you ask just show us that democracy continues to be alive and well. So I thank you for your appearance here and I thank you in advance for your participation. There will be no bad questions. We encourage everyone to ask questions. Your participation is extremely important to making this happen. I also want to thank the commissioners for the openness of the process and the thoroughness of the process up to this point. We've had open meetings at the commissioners for several months. People like myself, Sheriff Crawford, prosecuting attorney Jason Given, the commissioners and others have participated in those open meetings in a back and forth as we attempted to solve the issue of a new justice center. And it's through that participation that ultimately myself and everyone else who were part of those meetings encouraged the commissioners to vote in favor of putting a half percent sales tax on the ballot. We thank the commissioners for doing that. It's why we're here this evening. I also need to explain that as a judge, my remarks are limited. Judges are not allowed to speak publicly on matters of political issues. However, judges do have the ability to speak on political issues as they relate to the law. As an example, in 2018, I spoke against issue one. That's when myself, the other judges of Koshockton County and judges across the state of Ohio spoke in opposition to Mark Zuckerberg, a California billionaire's attempt to legalize drugs in the state of Ohio. It was an attempt to modify the Ohio Constitution. You rejected it soundly and I thank you for that. The jail is also a matter of the law. And when we talk about the Constitution and jails or prisons, we're talking about the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. Within that Eighth Amendment is a prohibition against cruel and unusual punishment. Now, we know the Supreme Court agrees with us, and I feel this way, I'm sure you do too, that in- (noise) I'm going to be careful of that mic there. Incarceration is supposed to be harsh and adverse. Incarceration in a jail in a correctional facility is inherently harsh. That's part of incarceration. However, the Supreme Court has also said that incarceration must have a corrective function. That's what you and I, we call rehabilitation. Presently, the Koshockton County Justice Center has absolutely no corrective function whatsoever. The only thing that we can provide at the Justice Center is punishment in the form of harsh and adverse conditions. When we go deeper into the Eighth Amendment cases involving jails and prisons, one of the terms that we often find the United States Supreme Court using is something called deliberate indifference. What is deliberate indifference? Deliberate indifference is really a form of criminal negligence. It's disregarding a risk that we know exists. That's what happens at the jail. Deliberate indifference is when we do something wrong every day, knowing that it's wrong and knowing that someone could get hurt. What is deliberate indifference or what are examples of deliberate indifference at the Justice Center? Deliberate indifference could be when we have 70 to 80 inmates in a facility at a time that's certified for 15. Ladies and gentlemen, that could be deliberate indifference. And what is it deliberate indifference to? It's deliberate indifference to the safety of the corrections officers and the inmates in that facility. I emphasize corrections officers because they too are protected under the Constitution. What's another example of deliberate indifference? Deliberate indifference is when someone gets harmed and we know that that could happen. I can't tell you how many times Chip Udicious, our jail administrator or lieutenant, has had to call me at night to tell me that an inmate was badly beaten and had to be transported to a hospital in Columbus. Ladies and gentlemen, doing something wrong every day, knowing it's wrong and having people get harmed is deliberate indifference. At the end of the day, when we operate a justice center in violation of state law, knowing, again, that we're doing it in violation of the law, that is deliberate indifference. So what does this mean to us? If the county is sued and we have a finding of deliberate indifference to the safety of the corrections officers and the inmates in that facility, a federal judge will take over the Koshockton County Justice Center. Who's this federal judge? It's somebody you've probably never met before. It is someone that no one in this room or anywhere has ever cast a vote for because federal judges are appointed. The federal judge is probably somebody who's never been to Koshockton County and probably couldn't even find this place on a map. And that federal judge, who no one's ever voted for, is going to take control over our justice center. He is going to determine where a new justice center is going to be built, how much it's going to cost, and how it's going to be staffed. All of it will be outside of our control at that point. The federal role in building these things is a little bit different than the local level and I think attorney, prosecuting attorney Jason Given is going to talk to you about that. It's going to cost a lot more, probably double, and again, we wouldn't have this half percent sales tax on to pay for it, so the money comes from the general fund. At the end of the day, what does that mean to you? If a federal judge, through a lawsuit, gains control over our justice center and forces its new construction, the money will come from the general fund, meaning we will only have money for the justice center and the corrections officers that work there and there will likely be no deputies patrolling the roads. Ladies and gentlemen, I am not presenting to you a dramatic picture of what might happen. I'm trying to tell you the truth. This is not a sky, the sky is falling approach to this problem. I tell you this because I swore to do this when I took office. When I took office, I took an oath and I took that oath to support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the state of Ohio. That's really what this is about. This is not about inmate comfort or comforts. This is about the Constitution. This is about taking local control over a very serious problem before a federal judge takes control over it. This is about taking pride in the way that we handle corrections in Koshockton County. This is about getting the justice center back on the right side of the law. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your participation tonight and giving me the opportunity to make these remarks. I will be here at the end if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. And again, please forgive, we've had a few of these little crackles as we got started that has nothing to do with the mic. I'm not sure what's going on, so just be patient with us there. So we've talked about constitutional law during this and now let's talk money, right? Dollars and cents. We want to welcome up County Commissioner Gary Fisher.
Thank you, Kirby. Thank you, Judge. Thank all of you for being here tonight. Your attendance shows me that you have interest in this issue and your attendance and being here allows us to address your questions. And believe me, that's all we want to do tonight is to address your questions and give you the facts. On behalf of Commissioner Conkle, I'd like to extend an apology for Commissioner Shiock. He is on vacation, previous scheduled vacation, so he extends his apologies for not being here tonight. We appreciate your interest and here we go. We're going to deal into the numbers. The commissioner's office is primarily in charge of budgeting. The justice center is the biggest liability and biggest concern of finances in our county and the biggest liability to our office to budget and keep everything operating. The county commissioners have been meeting and planning to resolve this concern for several years now. We have met with our three judges, the county sheriff, and the county prosecutor. And as mentioned, local people on the committee recently, their input has been invaluable. We also have worked with state elected officials. We were driving the bus, quite honestly, to lobby our state officials and a county commissioners association to allow us to present an inc- or a sales tax, a half percent sales tax to the public. And that didn't come easy. That was a lengthy process and Senator Hottinger was very helpful in that extended process. And to be real frank with you, Koshockton County was the first to do this. And Jason Given was writing the legislation as we went along because, like I said, we were out in front of it. We wanted to present the fairest possibility to the public. We were able to consent, to convince our state officials to allow us to place an additional half percent sales tax on the ballot for a justice center only. We felt that the sales tax was a more fair tax and a smaller tax that you, as a public, have control over. And now the numbers. Everybody wants to know the cost and I've gone to put my attempt to explain that to you. The proposed sales tax will cost one-half of a penny on the dollar, 10 cents for every $20 purchase, and $1 for every $200 purchase. It's very important to note that the big ticket items, the big sale items, are excluded from this proposed half percent sales tax. Motor vehicles and outboard motors, regardless of their cost, are excluded from this additional one-half percent proposed sales tax. They are not included in any way, shape, or form. Our current sales tax rate in Koshockton County is 7.25%. 5.75% goes to the state of Ohio. That leaves 1.5% at the current rate that stays in the local general fund. If passed, the additional one-half percent sales tax would increase our rate from 1.50% to 2.0%. The justice center is a $28 million proposed facility. $24 million will be for the correctional side of the new jail. $4 million will be for the administration side. It will be a 25-year loan that the county commissioners will take out. It could be less and I'll explain to you how it will be less. The additional one-half percent sales, proposed sales tax would generate $1.4 million annually. $4.3 million from a recent sale of county-owned property that was formerly known as a hydraulic station, a hydrological station, was earmarked to offset the cost of the new justice center. I will let Sheriff Crawford explain to you in detail what that $4.3 million will be used for. Additionally, we have applied for two additional grants to go against this project. If received, they will offset the length of the loan. The proposed one-half percent sales tax drops at an earlier date than the 25 years if we receive those grants and if tax revenue is more than expected. Additionally, any major corporation or business located in Koshockton County that builds or expands in our county and pays sales tax on building materials would also help pay for the new justice center. It should be noted that we have $56 million in annual tourism dollars by visitors to Koshockton County that would also pay on your new justice center. In conclusion, we all want a safer community. We all want a safe workplace for our county employees that protect us each and every day. And we all want a facility that's capable of housing criminal offenders. We have all worked together to find a very affordable solution to a very, very real problem. And now, I am asking you for your support to resolve this issue and concern for all of us. I thank you and it's my pleasure to introduce Commissioner Rick Conkle. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, everyone. I just have something short to say. I just want to tell you that this is not a political issue. It is a financial issue that affects everyone in the county. The new justice center would be a very good investment for the whole community and would make it a safer place for us to live. We can implement new programs to help rehabilitate inmates, teach them about making better decisions, to lead better lives. We all can make a positive difference in our community by voting yes in the upcoming election. That's all I have. I'd like, I'd be happy to answer questions and just like everyone else will be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you very much, County Commissioners. Appreciate it. So we've talked constitutional law, we've talked finances, and now we want to talk about the site and the impact that this might have in economic development. So I want to welcome Koshockton County Port Authority Executive Director Tiffany Swigert.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. As Kirby stated, my name is Tiffany Swigert and I am the Executive Director of the Koshockton Port Authority. I've previously served though as the Regional Planning Director for 10 years and the Safety Coordinator for the Koshockton County Commissioners previous. And it was really during that time that I had the opportunity to understand greater and truly appreciate the work that our law enforcement officers do and the challenges that they are currently presented with in our existing jail. I appreciate each of you for being here this evening to learn about the importance of this proposed justice center to our community. A few of the items that I would like to address this evening are in regards to the site and how the justice center is a benefit to economic development efforts in our community. And I'm going to kind of do this in a question and answer format as we've realized that this really is a matter of importance to our community. So one of the questions that was posed to us was why was the steel ceilings or the former steel ceiling site selected for the future justice center? Well, this location is close to the courts and that's certainly important, but it's not close to a heavily residential area or a commercial area and it's not in the area in which a church or a school is located and that's certainly important to our community. We have heard that. This location on North Third Street is close to the highway, thus providing a quick access to other areas in the county. While the site is a total of 15.8 acres, really only seven acres is easily developable and that's because the remainder of that is in a challenging flood plain area. The remainder of that developable acreage doesn't really make the former steel ceiling site an ideal marketing tool for manufacturing operations because most of our new attraction leads are for well over 25 acres in size as they prefer larger acreage for a liability factor. This former steel ceiling site also has all of the utilities on or near the site and that can certainly significantly reduce the development cost of the justice center. So another question that's been posed to us is, is this a safe location for the justice center? Being the former steel ceiling site, this site has been in the process of remediation efforts for quite a few years. And when the West Rock operation was still here, the Koshockton Port Authority had entered into what's called a voluntary action program or a VAP in an effort to clean up the site so that West Rock could then expand their operations onto that site. Of course, we unfortunately know the rest of that story. Therefore, the Port Authority did continue to clean up the site and really kind of research what the potential highest and best use for that piece of property was being developable by seven acres. To date, the property has undergone various cleanup activities, including the removal of a cistern, ongoing testing for soil and air vapor. Multiple homes and businesses in the area surrounding the site have been tested and will continue to be tested. And results have come in under the EPA and OSHA recommended allowances. In addition to the diligent cleanup efforts, the construction design will be completed in a manner that will continue to ensure for proper monitoring and protection. Now, this is a common practice and we have numerous successful models that have been utilized in other communities specifically for justice centers that we have to work from. Our consultants, BGM Environmental, they continue to work with our community and the EPA to ensure that all proper steps are being taken to ensure from start to finish that this project can be successful. And that ultimately, something called a no further action or a covenant not to sue, which really is the seal of approval from the EPA and that also provides for future protection for the county, is ultimately obtained. Another question that has been asked is, was local dollars used to clean up the former steel ceiling site? So to answer that question, years ago, the Port Authority did receive a $700,000 grant in the form of a brownfield grant and that was to assist in those cleanup efforts. Additionally, $500,000 was provided from West Rock as of course, they had originally intended to utilize that site for a future expansion. So the answer is no, there has been no local funds utilized in the cleanup efforts at this point. So one of the questions that we've also received is, why is this an important economic development tool for Koshockton County? I think years ago, all of us could agree that it was common to hear that there's just no good jobs here in Koshockton. And while certainly times have changed, there are many, many ample jobs here in Koshockton that are great and quality jobs. As we sit down with even the best of our employers, it's a common conversation to hear that we need employees. Companies are competing with each other to staff their teams and many have found success in what was commonly thought of as a very unlikely area. And that's called second chance workers or second chance employers. That's now common terms that's utilized at HR tables or human resource tables all over Koshockton, all over the state of Ohio, and certainly nationwide. So employers understand that sometimes good people make bad mistakes and that with proper coaching and support, they can be great employees and better yet, community members. Our current jail just simply doesn't allow for any program support areas that can safely assist with these type of rehabilitation efforts. Our employers are in need of employees and this justice center, proposed justice center can certainly provide for an area in which rehabilitation takes on a whole new meeting. Lieutenant Chip Udicious will actually address that here shortly. I want to thank each of you for your interest and your support in this justice center. I will be around later this evening too to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany. Okay, we've talked constitutional law, we've talked finances, we've talked the site and economic development. Now let's talk about the jail. I want to welcome up the jail administrator, Lieutenant Chip Udicious.
Good evening. First, about our current justice center. Our current justice center was built in 1972. Another noteworthy thing happened that year and that was the foundation of the minimum standards for jails in Ohio, essentially the rules by which jails have to operate. See, when our current justice center was built, there were no such rules. Sheriffs could build and design their buildings however they wanted. There was no guidance from the state. When those rules took place, it caused a major problem. Our building that we're in now is not compliant with those standards and with the layout the jail has, it never will be. This puts the county at a huge liability because now we've been operating for 50 years in a building where we can't operate by the rules. But before we start talking more about the problems of the current justice center, let's talk about the layout of the new facility. The new facility is proposed to be a 126-bed facility. In that, there will be two female housing areas and four male housing areas. One housing area of each gender will be used to support minimum security inmates in an open bay style housing. The remaining areas can be medium or maximum security housing areas depending on the needs of the jail. Those housing areas that are maximum security can be used for isolation, for both disciplinary issues, and for medical problems. There will be a 24-seat classroom used for programming, outdoor recreation, interview rooms, video visitation, in-house laundry, medical, and food services. So let's talk about some of the factors that has led our jail to where we desperately need a new one. We are at a crisis point right now and part of that is because of population. The original jail was designed to house 62 inmates. Since I started as jail administrator in 2017, our average daily population has been 64 inmates. Over the course of the last 10 years, the average was 59 inmates. Now that being an average, that means numerous days we are well over those numbers, which means we are exceeding the number of beds that even we said we could hold when we designed the facility. On top of that, numerous people who should be serving a jail sentence end up getting diverted because of no bed space. This doesn't allow the courts to use the full range of sentencing that should be available to them. Judge Bachelor, for example, works very well with the justice center and is not able to use the work release program, partially due to COVID-19 concerns but also because of safety and security concerns. A new facility would allow the courts full access and full range of sentencing that they can use to properly sentence people that will hopefully deter crime. Currently, the population has been hanging around the mid-30s. Now for us, this feels very comfortable because we're used to populations much higher than that. That being said, we're still 233% over capacity for what the state of Ohio says we should be holding, which is 15 inmates. That's the number the state says we can house safely, so operating over that amount, as you've heard already, causes some major liability issues for the county. There's absolutely no way we- no way we can get down to 15 inmates. It just isn't feasible. We can't even maintain a population in the mid-30s. Because we are operating that low, the judges have to get very creative with some sentencing and some guidelines with probation that just isn't working as well as it could. If we decide to house out in order to make sure we can stay at that 15 inmate level, and we go back to pre-COVID numbers of 59 inmates per day, that puts us having to buy beds from surrounding counties if we can find them available. Now, currently, jail beds run an average of $65 to $100 a day if you're housing your inmates out. If we use those numbers, the county would be spending anywhere from $1,043,900 to $1,606,000 per year, depending on the cost of beds per day, to allow us to house 15 inmates in county like we should be. The lack of space has caused more problems than just the amount of people who don't get the consequences they should from the courts. When we are overcrowded, we have a difficulty in keeping inmates away from each other when they have issues with one another. This often leads to fights, and fighting can be a very commonplace thing down there. Inmates and officers both end up getting hurt in these fights. Sometimes, the officers themselves are the target of the fights. When these fights happen and the inmates are hurt, they end up having to go to the hospital. All these extra medical bills add up. Since we don't have the ability to properly take care of medical issues in-house, we end up sending them out to the hospital through the ER and additional treatment, which leads to our medical bills being much higher than they should be. At a new facility, first of all, we'd have the ability to segregate the inmates from one another and take care of those disciplinary issues, but also, we would have a more appropriate medical facility inside the Justice Center to take care of the basic medical needs. While some ER trips will still be unavoidable, that frees up numerous time for officers to be patrolling in the county instead of sitting guarding inmates. The lack of space and the increase in fights has brought another thing to our attention, and that's the lack of the ability to properly discipline the inmates when they do things wrong inside the Justice Center. With only two isolation cells, if multiple inmates are causing disturbance, our hands are tied, and we don't have the ability to properly deal with the situation as we should. At the new facility, there's a misconception that the inmates will have more freedoms and privileges, and life will be much better for them. That just isn't the case. The way we incarcerate individuals and the rules of the Justice Center do not change just because the facility does. The rules will still be enforced, only this time, I will have much more isolation cells to properly take care of the disciplinary issues and make sure we can correct the actions of the inmates causing problems. Currently, we have inmates who get to walk around freely, not locked in a cell, because we don't have water and toilet facilities in all the cells. That causes us to not be able to lock them down. In the new facility, the inmates won't have that option. They'll be locked in the secure housing areas, and they'll have less time out walking around, and discipline will have much more consequences at the new facility. In the current Justice Center, there is no programming. You've heard that several times. There isn't space, and there isn't the personnel to take care of the safety and security measures that it would take to run programs safely. Our recidivism rate, which is that number, which means how frequently a person would come back, is at 82%, which means 82 out of 100 people that come to visit us will come to visit us again. That's not really surprising, though, considering we're not giving them any tools to change the way they're living their lives already. At the new facility, we will be able to offer programming of all types, from parenting classes, anger management, GED, employability classes, religious services, AA, NA, and classes that will help provide coping skills for the inmates, to name a few. These will allow members of our community a chance to set their life on a different path. The biggest opposition I've heard is the comment that they are just inmates. I entered this career field after I'd already enlisted in the United States Army Reserves, and one of the main things that drew me to this career field was the ability to uphold the Constitution in my community. Well, that Constitution, that document that I know we all hold in reverence, also tells us that we are innocent until proven guilty. That presumption of innocence is one of the main things that separates our country from many others around the world. When you keep this in mind, the inmates are members of our community. They are somebody's loved ones. Now, their time to answer for their crimes will come. That's called due process. What I'm asking for is a Justice Center where we can safely house the inmates and safely allow the officers to work and make sure that we are able to obey the laws put forth by the state by meeting the minimum standards for jails in Ohio. I thank you very much for your time, and I ask for your support in November.
Thank you, Lieutenant Udicious. Next up, we want to welcome Koshockton County Sheriff, Jim Crawford.
Hello, everyone. I really appreciate everyone showing up this evening. You've heard a lot of great information. Hope you were able to digest that, and by November 2nd, make the decision to vote yes on this very important subject. For the last few days, or the last few evenings, I've been struggling. And I believe it is because I am trying to squeeze so much information in such little time. You see, the Justice Center Committee has put me on a time limit. I'm not used to being put on a time limit. As my wife says, when I get a mic, I don't normally give it back. For me to explain everything about this new Justice Center, and that's what my intent is here tonight, is to explain the administrative side, which is this portion right here, you'd be here all night. And I know you don't have that much time, so I will try to make it quick. But for more than 20 years, our county officials have been worked on replacing our current jail. It first presented, it was first presented under Sheriff Corbett. In fact, the same DRC grant, lost my train of thought, which we applied for, was also applied back then. It took DRC 20 years, over 20 years, to bring that grant back. And this grant is vital to this project. Without a doubt, the DRC is the largest grant that would come available for us, and that will eventually, ultimately, save everyone here tax dollars. We're talking in the millions of potential funding. We don't know if we're going to get it or when we're going to get it, but I am very optimistic that we will find this out very shortly. The grant alone will not fund the total project, even though it will be in the millions that I'm optimistic about. But we still need the funding source in place to pay off the balance. As Commissioner Fisher stated, whatever grant funding we receive takes off years on the 25-year loan. And this is just another reason why the sales tax is so important. I mention this so that you are aware, this isn't something that was thrown together overnight. When you plan on something for over 20 years, and this is, will be my third project that I have been involved with personally, you gain all that knowledge in your head, things that we planned years ago, and how we're going to design this facility even better. So a lot of thought and planning has definitely been put into this. With all the knowledge that's up on the stage, a lot of the other county employees and listening to residents on what they want, what they'd like to see, how we can serve them better, all that is taken into consideration when this idea was developed. This is a rough draft. This is not a full-color scale, and it's not, you know, to-scale, but that is as close as a rendering that we can provide today. What are some of the benefits for you and our staff? This will be a single-floor plan. There will not be a basement, which at times we have, in our current facility, taken folks downstairs to our interview room to take a report, to file their report, so that they can do it in private. It's not wheelchair-accessible. It's not easy for the elderly to get downstairs to that interview room, but that is all we have, because the front hallway is so congested in our current facility, it doesn't allow individuals' privacy. So when you drive up to the new facility, the first thing you'll notice is an abundance of parking. Again, in our current facility, we do not have an abundance of parking. Matter of fact, I've driven around the parking lot multiple times, either waiting for someone to pull out or park somewhere else. The second thing you'll notice is two separate entrances. You'll notice a jail entrance on the far right, and you'll notice a entrance on the left that will allow you to come in to the prosecuting attorney's office or my office, my administrative office. The new admin office will include all the services we currently provide our community today, but with less congestion and more privacy. You won't have to sit in our hallway while listening to video visitation like it is today. We have video visitation in our hallway for inmates and their family to come in and have visitation with them. You won't have people overhearing your conversations that you would prefer to keep private. You won't have to wonder where to go to be waited on, because our friendly staff will still be, will still provide assistance at the front office, whether you're coming in for a CCW, background check, record check, or to file a report. Our dispatch center will be located in a secluded area with limited traffic. This will reduce excessive noise and bleed over on the radio, which we currently have today. It is a common gathering location because of where it sits within our office. It's right in the middle. It's between the jail and the front hallway. Simple things like outlets, wiring for technology. One of the things I will not miss is the overloading of circuits and blowing fuses. Now, for the best part, as Commissioner Fisher stated, the sale of the hydrological station brought $4.3 million. The commissioners have earmarked the sale of that property to go towards this $28 million project. And everything that I explained to you about the administrative side is estimated to cost $4 million. So it's paid for. Everything here on the left is paid for. But as I mentioned earlier, even though we have a portion, portion of that money, we still need the sales tax. We still need the additional funding resource to complete this project. I really want to thank you for showing interest here tonight in your community's future. Future, that is the real question. What will our future look like should we stay status quo? This proposed half percent sales tax for the construction of the Justice Center is vital to everyone's safety and security of our entire community. I believe everyone up here with me tonight would agree, criminals know where to commit crimes based on sentencing within a community. If the criminals know that we will lock them up, it is a huge deterrent to keep them from committing crimes within our community. And over the past 20 years of my experience, they do talk to each other while they're incarcerated. They find out who is, has the harshest sentencing, what county do you not want to go in. And when they communicate, they are transient. They will go from one county to the next to commit those crimes. We don't need additional criminals in our community. We want our community safe. Lack of housing, which leads to lack of consequences, which will ultimately lead to higher reoffending. As Lieutenant Udicious mentioned, we are currently at a rate of 82% recidivism. That is too high. We're working on the fourth generation of criminals. We have to do something about that. And as Lieutenant Udicious spoke about programming, that is the only way we can educate them out of crime. Because our facility, even with this facility, if we don't educate them, they will keep coming back. As your sheriff, I am the keeper of the jail. That means I am responsible for the care, custody, and control of all those incarcerated. I am also responsible for all of my employees. At the present time, I am extremely concerned for everyone's safety within our current facility. I stand here tonight to ask for your support and that everyone votes yes on November 2nd. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sheriff Crawford. One more speaker, and then we will open it up for questions. Next up, we're going to welcome the Koshockton County Prosecutor, Jason Given.
Good evening, folks. I don't want to take too much more time, because quite frankly, we're all excited to hear the questions that you have for us. We've spent a lot of time on this, as you can tell, and we want to hear your opinions. We want to hear your questions and hopefully give you some insightful answers. But before we do that, I think there are a few important points that you, as informed voters, need to keep in mind when you cast your vote, hopefully in support of the levy on November 2nd. I've been in courtrooms trying cases now for almost 20 years, and a good prosecutor, when he's talking to a jury, is going to break his case down into a theme. And sometimes, that theme might be a couple sentences long. Sometimes, the theme may just be one word. And I think the theme that I've heard tonight from all the speakers is danger, that our current facility is a danger. It's a danger to our law enforcement and corrections officers. It's a danger to our county's financial stability, and it's a danger to the inmates that reside inside the current facility. So let's talk about the inmates for a minute. This is not, as you've heard, about making things, about making things more comfortable for them. They need harsh conditions. Punishment should be harsh. The courts agree with that. This isn't about comfort. This is about safety. And safety and punishment are not mutually exclusive. You can safely punish people. Unfortunately, we're not doing that right now. And the other thing that I want to make sure you understand, and not a lot of folks in the public do, is that not all inmates are created equal. There may be an inmate in the jail right now that's in there because he failed to pay a parking ticket. He just hasn't committed a crime, or he doesn't have a criminal record. He's in there because a court said, "You failed to pay this ticket." Or the inmate might be in there because a judge has ordered him to do something. He didn't do it. It's not a crime, but that's still a consequence of that. He doesn't have a criminal record. But in the current facility, we have to take that person that failed to pay that parking ticket and put him in very close quarters and close contact with murderers, with rapists, and with other violent offenders. with rapists, and with other violent offenders. This, ladies and gentlemen, is a recipe for disaster. We need to be able to safely punish these inmates. And right now, we can't do that. And because we can't do that, that also raises the risks, as you've heard, to our deputies and our corrections staff. Over the last decade-plus, our deputies and corrections officers have been placed in a very difficult position. They have to secure an overcrowded jail that is not up to modern standards, and they have to house violent offenders in very, very close quarters. This causes incredible safety risk for our law enforcement and corrections officers. So, over the years, when, when you come in, if you serve on a grand jury in Koshakton, you serve for six months. You come in once a month. And over the period of that six months, you go to the jail, and Lieutenant Udisius and the sheriff actually give you a tour of the jail on two separate occasions. The statutes of the state of Ohio say a grand jury has to do that. And when they come back, we, I often have conversations with them, and their eyes have been opened at that point. And we start talking. And I often go back to an event that happened several years ago, when I'm explaining to them the inherent safety risks that are involved in the current facility. And the event I go back to is when an inmate was able to overpower a guard, get a hold of that guard's taser. The guard obviously had to retreat. Deputies had to gather in order to facilitate a plan to get control over this person again and get control of the jail. And, of course, this happens all very quickly, but in that short period of time, that individual had the ability to roam the halls of the jail and access places that we, quite frankly, don't want someone like that to be able to access. And one of the places that individual was able to try to access was our dispatch 911 center. And he was actually trying to force his way through that door. And dispatch staff and a deputy had to forcefully hold the door shut. Why? Because every door in that jail requires a key. You actually have to have the key and go in and lock the door. When this is all happening very quickly, you don't have time to grab the key and lock the door. So eventually, they were able to take what could have been a very, very bad situation and get it under control professionally and eliminate that threat. But it shows you what the current jail lacks and what the new jail will provide. In the new jail, it's very unlikely that that inmate's going to get in the kind of proximity to a guard where he's able to overpower him. If he would be able to do that, his access to other areas of the jail is almost nonexistent at that point in a new facility. And also, if that would happen instantly with one press of one button, that whole jail locks down. No keys are necessary at that point. So this illustrates the dangers our COs and our deputies have to face working in a subpar conditions and doing the very best they can with the tools that they are given. And those tools are provided to them by the county, through county finances. And this jail, as you've heard, as you've heard from Judge Bachelor, is an incredible danger to our county's financial stability. Judge Bachelor, in his remarks, talked about how, what a federal judge could do. And I just want to take that a couple steps further, because there's some other things you need to understand about that. When that federal judge has that lawsuit, where someone sued us, and he's looking at this to see if, if we are complying with the Constitution and the laws of the state of Ohio, he's going to look at everything and make a decision on whether or not our jail meets the constitutional standards. I can almost assure you, he will say no. But what the interesting point is, is that he could order us to build the jail, build a new jail, even if we win the lawsuit. The county could go in and defend the lawsuit and defend it successfully. And the judge could say, "The case is dismissed. The county's the winner." But, county, that jail is so bad that even though you won the lawsuit, I'm still taking it over, and I'm still going to order you to build a new one. And as the judge said, when we have to build the new one, conservatively, it'll be double. You're going to take a $28 million, $24 million project and take it up to almost a $50 to $60 million project. Because we have to build it to federal prison standards at that point. We have to staff it to federal prison standards at that point. And we all know that when government agencies get a hold of projects, that's when we start hearing these stories about $30,000 hammers. So with Uncle Sam looking over our shoulder as we have to build a new jail to these federal specifications, the cost is going to be incredible. It's going to bankrupt the county. So this is going to happen, one way or the other. Either we're going to voluntarily build a new jail, and we're going to do it based on what our community needs, or we're going to involuntarily build a jail, and we're going to do it in whatever way the federal government says we have to do it. I would prefer we keep local control over that. Listen, folks, I don't like the idea of taxes any more than the next person. It's not something I enjoy. But in doing the job, in being your prosecuting attorney, there's a lot of things I deal with that keep me up at night. There's a lot of things I deal with that worry me. But nothing worries me more in the time that I've been doing this job than the, than the current jail and the liability that it causes our county. It's an issue that we've dealt with for years. It's come to a head. We've gone to extraordinary lengths, as you've heard tonight, to try to put before you the most minimal and the most fair tax that we can find. Now, as I said, I don't like any taxes. But I will gladly pay this tax, knowing what I know. And in doing that, we've gone to the extraordinary lengths of, as you've heard, having Columbus write law for us. We've got legislation passed so we can present to you a sales tax. Before this, the only way that we would be able to fund the jail was through a real estate tax levy. And we did not think that that was something that the voters would accept. So we went to Columbus, and we took the initiative, and we said, "Give our voters in Koshakton County and across the state of Ohio another option. This is the option we've come up with. But now it's up to you. We need your help. The deputies that protect us every day need your help." These gentlemen, I've worked with them for 20 years now. Every one of them that I work with takes a great deal of pride in the uniform that they wear. Let us, as a community, provide them with a workplace that's safe, and a workplace that they can be proud of. I thank you for your support.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all these presentations. I will say, every time that static hits, it takes me right out of my chair. So you guys did a great job of kind of talking through those. This is when we really do want to hear from you. We want to hear questions. Now, I will say, our plan was to have a wireless mic back by, just back at the, back there. I don't see that wireless mic. So if you would, if you want to raise your hand, kind of holler out your question to us, I will repeat the question so the people listening over livestream will be able to hear the question, and then we will figure out who should best answer the question. So who would like to ask the first question? Yes, sir? So the question is, are we, will we be bringing other inmates from other counties into the new facility?
To answer that question, the answer would be, we would have the capability of doing that, yes. How, how the process will go is yet to be determined, but... That answer your question? The 126-bed facility is projected for a 25- to 30-year plan. It's designed so it will house our local inmates to that extent. At the very beginning, we aren't anticipating filling that to its fullest capacity. Now, when other inmates would happen to come into our facility, they, the other county would pay us to house them. It could be a source of revenue. But I would never budget it, because it's not a guarantee. I'm not guaranteed, you know, five inmates per week, or 10. And depending on who's asking, you know, part of DRC grant, they kind of support regional facilities, which is considered multi-jurisdictional facilities. The grant process, actually, there were zero that applied for a regional facility. So they wanted a assurance that we would help our neighbors, you know, our adjoining counties. Because here, two weeks ago, we had one inmate that we wanted to house out. We needed to house that person out of our facility. We called all the surrounding counties. They were all full. So being at maximum capacity for those facilities that are probably, what, more than 10 years old or better, Muskingham County's way older than that, you know, we needed to plan for 25 to 30 years out, and that's why it's 126. If we ever get that Pittsburgh corridor to go through here, our population is going to expand. We're going to see the good and the bad. With the facility that's housing 126, we will have that capability. So does that answer a little bit more for you?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question, and I just wanted to speak to that, because that's kind of been a theme of the discussions in the back, in the forth. One of the things you need to understand that is we are not going to be a dumping ground for problem inmates from places like Cuyahoga County, Franklin County, Lucas County, Summit County, all right? Sheriff might get into some arrangements for additional inmates from some area counties in, in the region. But again, we will not be bringing in their problems to our community to have their families come in here and for visitation and set down roots here. That's, that's exactly the opposite of what we want to accomplish here. That's an excellent question and a great concern. We have talked about that. It depends, again, ultimately, on who the sheriff is and, and his policies, though. Thank you.
Cool. All right, great. It's always good to get the first question. So, so thank you for that. Next question? Yes, sir?
I really have questions for Representative Miller, and he's not here. So I don't know whether he's listening or whether to ask it or not.
Well, I mean, ask the question, and we'll do, if we can answer it, we'll try and answer it.
I have a brother lives in Georgia, and they have 8% sales tax. 4% is the state, and 4% is local. He lives in the rural community. He used to be the size of the shop. Now it's doubled in size. But with that 4% sales tax for the local community, he has municipal water at the end of his lane. He can call 911 to get a paid fireman or paid EMS to his place. And they have a regional jail where he lives. And the state pays to send their overflow to the jail and make money on the jail. But it's all because of the 4% local sales tax. You might remember a city council, Governor Casey, which got elected. Their local government funds were coming down. When he balanced the budget, I'd take it out of there.
Yes, sir.
And local places would... He had to beg to get a half percent, you know, local sales tax. You know, there's, you know, we all want a lot of things that a lot of places downtown provide. And they're doing it for sales tax purposes there. But I don't think the local legislature and the locals see it the second way.
So it sounds like what you're saying is, that, you know, different states handle the distribution of the collection of taxes in different ways. I'm not going to... Jason, you want to jump in this? I, I, my guess is, Jason's going to say, "We can control what we can control."
If Representative Miller is listening, and they want to give us half of the sales tax, we'll take it. That won't be a problem. We won't send it back. But no, I mean, that's controlled completely by the, by Columbus. The way the sales tax is, is collected and the way that it is distributed is based upon statute. As of right now, they separate that out as to what the state can charge for the sales tax and what the local community, what the county can charge. As of right now, the sales tax that the commissioners can charge, without placing it before the voters, has a ceiling of 1.5%. That's where we're at. This sales tax is designed to be solely for the construction of that corrections facility. That it's called, it's actually in the statute, called a detention facility. And so the only things this money can be used for is the construction, equipping, and furnishing of a detention facility. So that's the $24 million side of the project. The administrative side, we cannot use the sales tax for the administrative side. That's the $4 million side that the money from the hydrological station will be put towards. So, so the administrative side's paid for. The only part we will have left to pay for is the jail, the detention facility itself, at $24 million. That will be paid for with the half percent, if it's passed. And as soon as it is paid, the sales tax goes away. We drop back down to the 1.5% from the two. So that is the sole purpose. The other thing that is, in the statutes, that they use this for is to build major cities when they build their sports arenas. They give the ability for them to do this. And so when we were researching it and trying to provide the legislature with alternative ideas to real estate tax levies, one of the things that I looked at was the fact that we use these for sports stadiums. Well, if it's good enough for, you know, to build a sports arena, it's probably good enough to build a local jail, too. And so that's when we presented that to the, to the legislature and to the, to the governor's office, and they agreed with us. So that, that's how the sales tax works. Again, if they want to give us half of it, that's wonderful. I don't really see that happening any time in the future. But that's, that's how it all plays out as it relates to the tax itself.
Every time, scares me. Okay. Next question. Michelle?
I have an online question from the WTNS Facebook feed.
Okay.
This is Opa Lawson Jr., two-part question. Yes, speak over here. Okay, so Opa Lawson Jr., "Since the jail has been out of standard since 1972, when was it, when it was built? Why hasn't the federal government or the state already mandated a new jail?" Part one. And then the second part of her question, or his question, is, "Where's the funding going to come from to operate the new jail services and programs that you're talking about the, being able to offer?"
I'll go first here. And just in terms of part of the question, the state isn't going to shut down the jail. They just give us a report every year that tells us how many standards we violate and how many standards we're in compliance with. And I'll let Chip speak to those reports. I get those reports, which is one of my interests in how the jail is operated and also because it affects how the court is operated. The other thing is that we haven't had the lawsuit yet. The other thing is that we haven't had the lawsuit yet. We're anticipating that that's going to come. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball. Our concern, folks, no, nobody up here wants to raise taxes. Nobody up, came up here to say, "Hey, we need more of your tax money." This is just a tough discussion about a solution to a problem that exists, and we're trying to tell you the truth about this problem so that you can make an informed decision. So to answer the first part, the state is not going to shut down the jail, they're just going to tell us where we're out of compliance and let us continue to operate that way. And we have not had the lawsuit yet where a federal judge has come in to take over because of a violation of the Eighth Amendment. And we'll let Chip go to the other part.
So every year, we get inspected by the state, like Judge Bachelor said. That state inspection has no consequences except for the fact telling us where we rate, and it also tells what our liability aspect is for potential lawsuits or problems. We get that inspection every year. Federal government does not come in to inspect at all. They would only come based upon that lawsuit. Now, for the second part of the question about what the money, where the money will come from, the county commissioners will be paying for the additional officers out of the general fund. By us building it the way we're building it, it's a minimal increase in officers. And as for the programming side of things, the programming will be conducted by volunteers. We'll bring in groups like CBHC and Allwell, who are already receiving funding to put on programs, into the jail, along with ministers, conduct Bible studies. AA and NA would be volunteer-based as well. Anything that we would end up having to pay for would not come out of taxpayer funding, that would come out of something called the commissary funds. In jail, you have the ability to buy items through our commissary company, and when you buy those items, a portion of the proceeds get kept by the county into the inmate welfare account. That inmate welfare account can only be used for purchases that benefit the inmates. That money sits there until a project like that is needed. Now, I should mention that when they do this purchase of items, they also pay sales tax, so this will be as close as they can come to helping pay for their own facility. Hope that answers your questions.
Thank you for the question online, that's outstanding. What other questions do we have? Yes, sir?
Uh, only average, uh, in making sense, what's the average on suspended in jail?
That's a good question. Yeah.
Repeat the question for the...
So, so the question is, is paraphrasing, in, on average, how long is an inmate in the local jail?
And percentage, how long?
So, 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 on sentences, that's going to vary depending on what the judge does. Now Judge Bachelor has the ability to sentence people either to prison for felony violations or to local incarceration, and that can be for 180, it could be for multiple 180-day sentences. Um, number two...
Maybe a year and a half.
Year and a half's about the max on a felony. Um, number two, as it relates to sentencing, is, uh, would be Judge France at municipal court. Um, his sentences for misdemeanors range anywhere from 30 to 180 days. Uh, depending on how they're served, they could be stacked, what we call consecutively, so someone may spend a year in there, um, or more. Uh, the other thing that you have to keep in mind is Judge Blanchard at juvenile probate court, he may be sentencing people in there, yeah, for instance, if they don't pay their child support, uh, orders. So they may be going in, and they may go in for 30, 60, 90 days. The other thing you have to remember is, these are people that have been convicted and sentenced. We also have what we call pre-trial detention, both in felony cases and misdemeanor cases. In felony cases, especially when we get to the high-end felony cases, when you start getting into your aggravated murders, your aggravated robberies, um, your high-end drug trafficking, uh, your high-end sex offense cases, they may be in pre-trial detention in the jail for up to a year and a half. That's, that would not be necessarily uncommon if you get an aggravated murder case with a death penalty specification, that someone would be sitting in jail in pre-trial detention for a year and a half, uh, to two years. The other thing that, though, that what the new jail will provide, will be able to house these folks and not, for lack of a better term, hamstring the judges, uh, into having to perhaps let somebody out that maybe they don't really want to. Uh, or, you know, maybe set a bond a different way because they have to take jail capacity, uh, into account. So I, I hope that answers your question, there's, it's kind of a multifaceted answer, but there's the sentencing aspect. As, as to an average, I don't know that we could, would even have the ability to calculate that, uh, because it just varies case to case.
I'm gonna piggyback onto that answer. One of the other things that we need jail space for, and we never know how long it's gonna last, is for violations of bond. Under the Constitution, you have the right to post bail, to, to get out of jail pending the trial on your charges. And you can do that, but we also have conditions on your bail, we call it bond, but a lot of people call it bail. And we have a very aggressive pre-trial supervision, uh, department that monitors people that are out on bail, whether they're on GPS monitors or for drug testing. So I need the jail space because if you violate, you, you need to have an immediate sanction. We'll call you in, let's say on a Friday, you come in, if you have a positive drug screen, you go to jail right then, your bond is revoked until you can come back to court and argue for a new bond, and sometimes you don't get a new bond, or you don't get a post bail again, like Jason said, and you're just in jail for a while. The other, uh, the other reason we need jail space is we have people on felony probation. Not everybody goes to prison, some people end up on probation. We have the same philosophy for felony probationers, immediate sanctions for things like giving us a positive drug screen. Again, we have a very aggressive probation department. Without that jail space, okay, it makes probation meaningless, all right, if you can't have the immediate sanction, that's absolutely crucial. And then again, I want to emphasize the need to, to have sanctions for violation of bond. So that jail space is, is very important, and I know I give Chip headaches all the time because he might have a certain number in mind, and all of a sudden, he gets five new people in a day that he wasn't expecting. That's part of the, of why we need a new justice center, so we can have those beds available for immediate sanctions. Thank you.
Great question so far, gang, really appreciate it. Um, do we have another one online, did I see, maybe?
Yes, we do. First question, I've got a few different ones.
Okay.
Uh, the first question was, why didn't we decide to build the new jail on the hydraulic site?
Who wants it? Tiff?
So that site is actually a good distance from the courts, um, any of really the social services that are able to be served, and it would cause a tremendous barrier for our sheriff's office when it comes to any kind of transportation, um, issues, but also for response. Um, I mean, it, it really, that is located in Mill Creek? What township is the hydrologic station in?
White Eyes.
Why, okay, White Eyes, thank you Rusty, in White Eyes Township. And so it's not central to be able to serve the entire county, which is really important for the sheriff's office to be able to do. Now sheriff, if there's anything that you want to add to that. Also, that site does not have the utility service that would be needed to be able to handle this type of development, and that utility cost would be quite, quite costly, really, to be able to extend that, thus increasing, um, our, our cost for that.
Thank you.
Tiffany answered that question very well. One of the things that we had to consider is, we do provide law enforcement for the city of Koshokton. You won't find any other county sheriffs doing that, so normally sheriff's offices are built and their jail are built into the county. But with us providing law enforcement service within the city, we had to come up with a location that would serve both. And being off of County Road 1A gives us easy access to the rural community as well as easy access to the city.
Thank you. Should I go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead, bring another one.
Okay. Do we have enough trained and qualified workforce candidates for the new jail? And what are the plans being made to ensure that we have them?
Okay. Chip?
For corrections, you go through the academy after you get hired. As for do we have enough qualified applicants, I have probably 30 to 50 applications in my office, based on gender, and so I would assume inside there, I could easily find four applications of people that would be qualified, which would be the number that I would be looking to add on, on top of where we're going to be at the end of, at this justice center. So we shouldn't have a problem getting qualified workers. As for the training, we train them in-house on how to operate the local facility, and then they go to attend what's called the Corrections Academy, which is 144-hour course. They would go either to a surrounding county where it's put on, or the hopes will be to eventually put on our own.
Couple more, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, is the expense of having a new jail going to be more than the current jail?
Is the expense of having a new jail going to be more than the current jail?
Operationally?
Operationally?
I'm reading it.
Operating it.
That's what it seems, like the overhead.
Yeah, Joe, I think we have answered that, but jump in.
The, the quick answer is yes. The operational expense will be more than where we are currently, partly to do by population that we are housing. We're right around $50 a day per inmate. At our current rate, or our current population being low based on the pandemic numbers that we want to house, uh, we're anticipating at least holding 80. Therefore, the food, uh, costs will go up. Um, as Lieutenant Udisius men, Lieutenant Udisius mentioned, the additional four corrections officers will be added, and a correction officer right now, you can, uh, budget with full family healthcare and wages of right around $85,000.
Okay? Thank you. Two, I think we had one more question out in the audience, Michelle, and then I'll come back to you. But, Tom, did you have one?
I have a question about the, about representing the lines, you've got to be able to zoom, like if I'm in jail, my grandmother wants to get in touch with me, you can zoom her in, and have many jails that are using that now?
It's called a video visitation system, it's widely used across the state and across the nation. We already have it in-house now. When the governor shut down visitation last year, our inmates went several months without any form of contact, visit-wise, with their families at all. So last September, we actually installed the video visitation system, where it's much like Zoom, but it's a very secure communication system. There's kiosk in the block where the inmates conduct their visitation, and then families can visit either through the kiosks that are in the front hallway or through their mobile device at home at a small expense to them. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I assume it would make a difference.
Yes, it makes a big difference, and it was a very good thing to add in.
Okay. Uh, Michelle, you want to throw another one at us?
Okay. Will, will JFS workforce program and caseworker be working with the inmates as well? Are the inmates going to be educated, are the inmates that are being educated going to be put into the workforce upon release as part of their sentences?
There's another committee that goes on around town called the Community Corrections Committee, and in there, we've been talking extensively about having what's called a re-entry coordinator. Some surrounding counties have that. That re-entry coordinator helps people who are in jail, about to get out, transition into civilian life to where they can arrange for jobs, they can arrange for housing, attach them to services such as mental health counseling, drug treatment programs, and that coordinator would help try and attach them to the workforce. We obviously can't mandate that they follow through and attend the workforce, and we also, they also can't tell the employers they have to take the inmates, so that's somewhat out of our control. They will be available for the workforce, and they will be able to go out and look for work as soon as they're done. Those classes we're doing in-house, such as GED, employability classes, and then the other services, would definitely help prepare them for that, and we certainly hope that they would take advantage of those facilities.
I'll, uh, piggyback onto that one as well. And one of the things everybody needs to understand is that programming, when it comes to corrections, isn't all about hugs and puppies and nice feelings, okay? There's a hardcore group of people that simply are not going to respond to programming. We know that, and it's not just here, it's everywhere. But we do know that some of the offenders will respond, and when they have an opportunity to get clean and to get a job and start to put their lives back together, they don't commit crimes again. That's a, that's a, uh, a study, it's a fact, it happens in jurisdictions all over the United States. We do it here in Koshokton, we've adopted some of those policies for a small group of people in common pleas court, and I know that they do it extensively in municipal court as well. So the programming isn't a, a magic wand, but it's getting smart on how we do, deal with offenders so they don't commit new crimes, and my biggest thing is them graduating to more serious crimes, going from misdemeanors to low-level felonies to home invasions. The whole concept of programming isn't about giving a hug to somebody so that they get a job, it's about community safety and making sure that they're not breaking into your homes, so that, because they, they learn how to change, they, they shift, they transition into their lives, and again, they stop committing crimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I do in the courtroom every day, I'm going to say, "Your Honor, I'm sure you already said this, and I'm just making sure," uh, but one of the parts of the question was, is are they ordered, I think, to go get a job? And generally speaking, that is a fairly standard order on their probationary terms, at least in felony court, I think in misdemeanor court as well, is that yes, they are ordered to seek and maintain a minimum of 35 hours of employment. That is one of their probation conditions. So obviously, if we want them to be able to meet that condition, giving them the programming to go out and look for a job is, is essential.
Yes, sir?
What would be a realistic timeline if this gets passed for completion?
That's a great question, we got that last night. The question is, what would be a realistic timeline for this to happen if it passes? Is that right? Okay. Sheriff, you answered it last night, right?
We are currently in the pre-planning stage. We don't have blueprints yet, we don't have a general contractor. We have location, an idea, now we need to put it all together, that's going to take some time. Two years could be possible. Hopefully, that would be my goal. Yesterday would be even better. So, thank you.
Yep. Great question. Good job. Good question, love it. Uh, Michelle, you have another?
Yes. Uh, will this help our 911 call center in any way?
Okay, good question, will this help our 911 call center in any way?
Absolutely. Like I stated during my speech, the 911 dispatch center, we will be adding four seats. We will have the room to expand the 911 center. What that'll give us is the ability for additional personnel that is working, should we have a crisis, to be able to go to a station and help out on any, uh, dispatching needs that we come up with. The other thing is, where the dispatch center is located, it'll be isolated from everybody else, so we won't get the bleed over like we have today. We won't have the congregating of personnel within that facility, so it'll be a lot quieter, a lot easier for the dispatchers to get the job done and give us the capability for the overflow should, uh, the need arise.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Michelle, you got one?
I have one more.
Okay, great. For what it's worth, this is great, this is what we wanted, so.
Okay. Does the county currently have the funding to support the additional staff and services that will be required to operate the new jail, or will there be a request for additional funds coming our way?
Gary.
Yes, good question, and that's a question that's been asked before, and the simple answer is yes. The county general fund will adequately, uh, fund the four additional personnel and the, uh, additional expenses of the new facility.
Thank you.
And to, just, can I, to clarify, that one of the questions was, will we be coming back to ask them for more funds?
No. No, that's, uh, yeah, thank you, Kirby. Uh, we're not coming back, this is not like a building a building and coming back and ask to pay for the staffing, that's not the intent. We planned out, and we budgeted, and we are prepared to, uh, incur the additional expense out of the general fund, so, no additional taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay. Any other questions? These have been great, folks, we really appreciate the questions. Yes, sir? I'm sorry?
I don't know your name.
Sir? Oh, how did I know your name? Uh, we've got eyes everywhere. No, I, I, yeah, that's good.
I have a question. How was trouble with your career?
I love it. Any other questions?
So I do, did just get one additional, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just got one back there, just behind you. Yes, sir?
Oh, we have the old cell.
Great question, we've been getting that a lot. Gary?
Repeat the question, yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, the question is, what would be done with the old facility, the present justice center? We've planned on looking at it to see if we can refacilitate it to any need that would be incurring in the county. In our office, it's been... In our office, it's been discussed at a records retention facility to store county records of all the county offices, but we'd have to have an architect, and we'd have to have the building inspectors look at that to see if that's possible. Uh, the second answer to your question was, uh, it's an old facility, and it would probably be, uh, it would probably be demoed if it would be not reused in any way. Um, and if it'd be demoed, uh, probably the property would be up for sale and it'd be put back in the tax base, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And just to piggyback on that as well, you know, that is, that's a prime location, of course, for the business, uh, community, right there on Chestnut Street. We've seen that area really develop and there be growth there as far as new buildings go. So should that be demolished, we would have the opportunity to market that for a business purpose and certainly, uh, put that money back into the tax base here, and hopefully create jobs as well.
Great point, Tiffany. That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. We've been getting, we've been getting that one a lot, so we want to make sure we do answer as many questions, especially on the live stream as we can. Michelle, you said you had another?
Yes, um, I got that one on the live stream as well, so thank you for asking.
Okay, good.
Um, how can you assume a $24 million facility when architectural plans have not been completed? Construction costs have increased tremendously in the past year.
Okay. Anybody?
When the initial plans were submitted, we utilized McAnally, Walked on McAnally Architect, which was under contract through the commissioners back in 2016, back when the other facility was being, uh, talked about. They put it, put this rendering together. They also did the square footage analysis of what it would cost to build this facility. So we actually have an architect who came up with these figures, and these figures would have been, uh, during the prime pandemic when the prices were high. We're hoping as we get out of this, that the prices will drop some. I've already seen, you know, prices on different things drop. Um, I haven't seen vehicles drop, though, but anyway, um, an architect actually did come up with these figures. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
To add on to that, Walked on McAnally is the architect that Sheriff mentioned. They have done jail constructions on several other projects, so they are very well-versed with the cost of corrections projects, not just projects in general, because there is a higher cost to it because it's a corrections project. So they are familiar with the type of construction and type of project it is, so we're pretty convinced that they'll be right on the money.
Michelle, you have another?
Uh, last question. Is there any consideration to possibly make the old building a juvenile detention center?
Jason?
No, there's not. Our juvenile probate court contracts, uh, with the Muskingham County Juvenile Detention Center, uh, I don't have the exact number, but I believe the beds that we reserve at that facility are somewhere between three and six beds that are, uh, normally available, uh, for Koshockton County. Um, there are specific rules. Uh, we cannot use this facility for juveniles, uh, because there's rules that we cannot house juveniles essentially in where we house adults for obvious reasons. Um, but quite, the, the idea behind, um, juvenile, uh, court and, and juvenile delinquency is that you want to rehabilitate these kids. Um, so detention, uh, is really kind of one of the very last resorts for them. Uh, and because of that, the numbers that we put into a detention facility at any one time from Koshockton County are fairly low. Um, so it would not, if we did a cost analysis benefit of reserving those beds from juvenile detention center in Muskingham County versus using this facility, uh, A, I don't think the state would let us use the facility in its current condition for juveniles. There's just no way. It would cost us an exorbitant amount of money to get it to a point where the state would even consider letting us do that. And number two, the cost-benefit analysis would tell us it's better off just to reserve the couple beds, uh, than build a whole facility for juvenile detention that, quite frankly, we're not going to use.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've gotten through the online questions, right? Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay. Well, I think as we've stated several times, uh, this evening, I think everyone here really genuinely appreciates those, those who are online, and really those who have come here tonight to ask the questions and kind of listen and try and be informed. We really do believe this is the best way for us to tell this complex story. Uh, it, just in the base of the questions we've gotten today, there's a lot to it. And so we appreciate you taking the time. We, we really do appreciate the support, and we would appreciate you considering, um, an affirmative vote for this issue once it's time to cast a ballot. So, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, guys, for being up here, and have a great night, everybody. And I apologize, before everybody leaves, we do have signs. If, if you have enjoyed the conversation tonight, we do have some signs. If you'd like to take some to support us, we do have them here this evening, so please feel free to help yourself.